A good evening, everybody. How's everyone doing? Doing good, doing good. First of all, I'd like to invite Andrea, our interpreter. Can you give an introduction, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to be practicing language justice today, and we're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish so that we can communicate in the language of our heart. If you're on Zoom, once we turn on the interpretation, you're going to see a globe that is going to come up at the bottom of your screen. You're going to click it, and you're going to select your preferred language. For those in the room, please remember to speak at a conversational pace and very close to your microphone. Hola a todos, soy Andrea. Estoy con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje el día de hoy, y tendremos interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español para que podamos comunicarnos en el idioma de nuestro corazón. Una vez que aprendamos la interpretación, si estás en Zoom, vas a ver un globo en la parte inferior de tu pantalla, donde le vas a dar clic y vas a seleccionar tu idioma. And how's we can start interpretation now?
Thank you, Andrea. All right, I'll call the order. I will call the order, October 27th, 2025 Work Session Meeting to order at this time of 6:01 PM. Items to discuss. First order of business tonight is the final housing needs assessment. I will now turn it over to Community Develop Director Andrew.
All right. Good evening, Council. Yes, this evening, we have Rachel Shinman with Economic and Planning Systems here to do a final presentation of our housing needs assessment that we've spent pretty much the whole year working on. You'll remember back in January, Rachel and Matt came in, gave a really great kind of overview of the data that they were, you know, looking into. And then since then, we've really been kind of finalizing the report and getting it to a good place so that we could have this presentation this evening. So Rachel will go through all of that tonight. And then, just as a reminder, this is kind of our data-only portion of the housing needs assessment. So we'll also be working on a separate report into next year that will go over more of the strategies that we want to look at and how we really address the data that came out of this assessment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Great, thank you, and good evening. Make this even a little bit lower. Need a little step stool back here. It's nice to be here again. As Andrew said, here to present the findings of the housing needs assessment. So last time we were here, Matt was also here. He hasn't disappeared. He just couldn't make it tonight, but we went over a lot of data. And so today is a recap of the data, but then also really focusing on what that data means for housing needs in Sheridan to help inform the conversations that are going to come moving forward. So on the first slide, we just have a reminder of what we did now and what comes next. So this is really wrapping up the what of housing needs. So what type of housing, for whom, at what price? And then what the characteristics of the needs are. And then the next piece is what to do about it. And so this is really intended to create that foundation to inform those conversations that are to come. So the next slide, we just have a recap of the questions that we asked as we went through this analysis. So we really had these five categories of data and analysis, so looking at who is living in Sheridan and how that's changed over time, what jobs are here and what impact that has on housing needs or doesn't have on housing needs, what the housing market actually looks like. So how much housing costs, how much is being built, what the housing on the ground looks like. And then the next piece of it is the affordability. So not much, not only how much it costs, but how much residents have to spend on housing and do those match or do those not? And then what that means in terms of needs and gaps moving forward. And so these are all the guiding questions that we asked ourselves as we went through the analysis and we refined based on our last conversation. And on the next slide, oh, there we go. We have some of these high-level findings. And so for those first three categories, there were some really interesting data points that came out that distinguished Sheridan from surrounding communities. And so a lot of these we went over last time, but we just wanted to remind you because it was a few months ago. But one is the slow growth or no growth in the population. And keeping in mind that this data is always a little hard to work with, especially in small numbers. So when we see a small decline or a small increase, what we really take out of that is that the population is generally stable. We're not seeing a big shift either way. Where we are seeing changes is in the makeup of the population. And so what we saw was a decrease in the sort of 20 to 35-year-old, that early workforce people, sort of starting families, and an increase in school-aged children and seniors. And so the increase in seniors we see in a lot of communities, the increase in school-aged population, we don't. And so what it means is that we're going to see an increase in a demand for maybe some larger housing units. And what we see in the data is that we might have some larger families still living in small units in what we see as overcrowded situation. And then there's also a much more diverse population than surrounding communities. In terms of housing, we actually saw a small increase in households, even with a small decrease in population, which is a very niche data trend to see. But what it tells us is that we're actually seeing kind of the same number of people live in smaller households. So even with that increase in children, I think we're also seeing, you know, that increasing senior population might be people who lived here, raised their family, kids left, and they're still here now. And also, as we see alongside other trends, potentially one- or two-person households moving in. And when we see that with no increase in population, what that tells us is if people are moving in, other people are moving out. And then a change in the makeup of family versus non-family households. And so that also tells us that there's more people living together with each other. So a non-family household is just non-blood or marriage-related people living together. And then the last piece of our sort of umbrella characteristics is about income and wages. And so what we see is that the median household income in Sheridan, which is, you know, half of households earn more, half earn less, is lower than surrounding communities. So just over $53,000. This is 2022, which was the most recent data we had when the analysis was done. But we also saw an increase in higher-earning households since 2010. And so, you know, we can't look at the data and say, we know that this many people in, with these characteristics are moving into the city, but we can start layering these data points onto each other to paint a picture of changes that might be happening. And then the other component here, so I talked about jobs and how much they do or don't influence housing. And so what we see here is an almost complete split between who works in the city and who lives in the city. And that's not unexpected, given the geographical nature, right? You cross the street and you're technically in another city, even though all you've done is cross the street. And so we wouldn't expect to see the same commuting patterns as we would in a place that is much more, you know, geographically separate from other places. And all that means is that we're not really looking at jobs as a driver of housing demand because someone can live a five-minute drive away from their job and work in Sheridan and live somewhere else, and that's not necessarily a problem. And so when we start looking at housing demand in the future, we're looking at growth in households of people who want to live here to live in Sheridan, not because they work here, because it's just not a factor as much as in other places. So on the next slide, I'm going to go through, some of this is a recap from last time, but just some of the key housing characteristics and market pieces that start to really help inform what the housing needs look like. And so the first is just how Sheridan is similar or different from peer communities. And so what we see is that there's a much higher percentage of housing units that are mobile homes and RVs than in peer communities. And we can see that, you know, going around town. And again, this isn't to say that this is a good thing or a bad thing, but it's something that distinguishes Sheridan from other communities and makes us think about housing in different ways. And then on the next slide, we can see that the housing stock is also older. And so this informs how we think about housing in a number of ways. So one, older homes tend to need more repairs. And as we start to layer on, again, those other data points about how much people earn and how much the housing they're in costs, if we want people to be able to stay in their housing, then we might want to give them assistance with repairs, right? Someone might be able to afford the base level of housing, but if they need to replace their roof because it was a 25-year-old, a 25-year roof, and it's been on the house for 30 years, that might be a cost that they need some assistance with. It also means that there might be lower-cost housing inventory for sale. And given what we know about the housing market in the region, that means that people might be looking to Sheridan for that lower-cost inventory to get in the market. And we've seen this with an increase in demolitions of existing houses. And so people might be looking at a lower-cost older home to purchase it and then redevelop it. And again, that's not necessarily a bad thing unless the person who was living in that house didn't want to leave, but for financial reasons is forced to. So we need to think about all of these characteristics together as we think about housing needs in the community. And then on the next slide, we start to layer on the prices. So how much does housing cost? And one thing to remember when we're looking at housing cost data is that it's not necessarily reflective of what people who are currently in housing are paying. This is looking at what it costs to move. So does someone currently in a home, can they move to a different home? And can someone outside of the community afford to move in? And so what we've seen is that even though, if we look at Sheridan compared to other surrounding communities, it's less expensive. I'm not going to say affordable, but it's less expensive. The prices have been increasing a lot over time, and we've actually seen the most significant increase in the lowest-cost homes. And so that highlighted row there is looking at the average price of the lower third of houses. And that price from 2010 to 2024 more than tripled. And so that means that just to get in, to get that lowest-cost house in the city in 2024, costs almost $375,000, whereas in 2015, it was $155,000. And so that barrier to entry to homeownership is moving further and further down the road. And then we see similar trends across the spectrum of houses that are selling. And then on the next slide, we look at, well, what happens if someone can't own a home? They rent, and we want to have a robust rental inventory because when not everybody wants to own a home, it also helps people come into a community, get their footing, and then purchase a home if they want to. It allows for transition in life. So whether, you know, someone gets divorced and then they have to sell a home and two people now have to find a housing unit, that's, that can be really hard financially. And so we want to make sure that there's adequate housing available for all types of needs. And so what we see again is that the cost comparatively in the region is lower, but it's increasing as fast or faster than a lot of other communities. And when we look at a per-unit average, the cost to rent a unit, an apartment in Sheridan has gone up by 36% since 2015. And I don't know about you all, but my paycheck has not gone up by 36% since 2015. And so we're seeing, along with other costs of living, this mismatch between how much people have to spend and what things cost. And housing is a part of that as well. So on the next slide, we look at what this means in terms of on-the-ground challenges. And so what we see is that in 2022, which in this case, again, was the most recent year we had data available, two-thirds of renters in the city were cost-burdened, which means they were spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And that had gone up from 42% in 2000. And over a third of owners were also cost-burdened. And so the cost burden for ownership is a little bit different because generally you get qualified based on your income, although if anyone has gone to get qualified for a mortgage, what you think you can afford and what someone might lend you can be very different. And that can put people in precarious situations if unexpected things happen. And then also if someone loses a job or changes a job, or people who go on to fixed incomes, that can change the affordability dynamics. But really, what we see in this is that a large percentage of the population, both owning and renting their homes, are paying more than they should for housing. And so on the next slide, we look at some additional housing challenges, and these also help inform what our housing needs are. And so I mentioned overcrowding before, and there's no one good data source on this, but we look at some census data about the number of people in households and the number of rooms and housing units. And then we also just look at the typical size of housing units and the typical household sizes. And what it tells us is that we're likely seeing higher levels of overcrowding in Sheridan than in other communities. And so that can be, you know, a six-person family living in a two-bedroom unit. It can be a four-person family living in one bedroom. It can be three families living in a single housing unit to cut down on costs. So it manifests in a lot of different ways. And then homelessness. And we know there's been a lot of work and is continuing to be a lot of work around homelessness in the region. And so we want to make sure that those are being brought into this conversation as well. And so we have in our calculation of housing needs, some of that as well. And so on the next slide, we look at how we actually look at what the needs are. And so every time we do a study like this, someone always says, well, how many units do we need? And I don't love this metric, to be honest, because I think thinking more about the type of housing and the type of people facing needs and the types of challenges they're facing can sometimes be more instructive. And also, this is now a requirement of the state and also helps drive policy, right? As we're looking at new developments come in, it helps us make sure that what we're building matches what the local needs are. But I would say, take the number with a grain of salt. You know, when we say 718 units, that's not to say that if we build exactly 718 units in the next 10 years, we're going to eliminate housing needs in the city. It means we're going to make a dent, and the characteristics and nature of needs might change. If we can eliminate housing needs in the next 10 years, I would be ecstatic. I would love to stop doing these types of studies. But we just want to make sure that we're not saying that if we build this, then the problem is gone. This is to help us understand the magnitude of the need and then where it's coming from. And so we'll go through these current needs and projected needs on the next couple of slides. So on the next slide, we look at the existing housing shortage. And so there's a lot of words here. I just want to make sure the context was there. But really, we're looking at three different factors that influence the current need. And so what this is telling us is, on the ground, today, right now, how much housing need is there and where is it coming from? And so this is what we call sometimes our quote-unquote catch-up. What do we need to catch up to needs that have currently happened? And so the three factors are reducing or eliminating overcrowding, reducing people living in temporary housing conditions, and reducing homelessness. And we can throw eliminating into all of these as well. And so we take the best available data to us, which is a combination of census data and data from the Chi Cities Homelessness Initiative. And we get just over 300 housing units currently. And so you'll see those two numbers at the bottom, the 294 and the 309. And the difference there is just the 294 is the sum of the need in those three categories. And then what we do is we increase that by 5% because every housing market should have enough vacant units that there's always somewhere for people to move, right? If we only have exactly as many housing units as we need, and I live in an apartment and I want to move to another one, there's not anything else available because we only have exactly as much as we need. And so we add in that 5% to say our goal should be to allow for a vacancy rate that is sufficient to allow movement within the market. And so that's the current need. And then the next piece on the next slide is the future need. And so that's looking at what growth we anticipate over the next 10 years and what that means in terms of housing need. And so I mentioned earlier that we're not really using jobs in this calculation. In some communities, we look at job growth, and then we look at what the nature of those jobs is, and we turn that into housing units. In this case, we're looking at projected household growth because we think that's a better metric for the nature of this community and the housing market and needs. And so what we did is we took county-wide growth. So the Department of Local Affairs and the State Demographer project growth at the county level for every county in the state. And so we just said that Sheridan is going to maintain its portion of the population. And so it currently has 1% of the county population. And so in the next 10 years, we're still going to have 1% of the county population. And so 1% of that growth is expected to come to Sheridan. And so that results in just over 400 more housing units. And so that's taking those households and again, adding that vacancy rate. And then what we did is, and this is in the report, we take these housing units and we say, well, what type of housing do we expect them to be? So we split them up into ownership units and rental units, and then by income level. And that's done based on the current distribution of income in the city. So it's maintaining what we have right now, and that is an analysis assumption. There isn't really a right or wrong way to allocate that need. But that's how we've done it for now. And so again, we're not saying that this will exactly be the nature of the population moving forward. But if we maintain current trends, then this is what we would expect to be. And this is the amount and type of housing that we would expect to need to meet the demand from growth. And so on the next slide, that's it. So that was a very, very quick overview of, I think, 74-page report. And so there's a lot more nuance to it. The report goes into what exactly can people afford, what that gap is. And I'm happy to answer any questions about what I went over tonight, any of the other data in the report, any overall questions about housing needs assessments and how we use them, or any comments that you have.
No. No, no questions? It was a, it was a lot of information in there. I was jotting through it. And I know it basically gives us an idea of what the things that we have to work on in the future. I mean, there was a thing where it was basically saying like 175 people were leaving. Some of the seniors were moving in. It was a lot of shifting.
Yeah.
Well, as you said, there was like no growth. And Sheridan consists of a lot of 60 and above. So we got, we have some work to do, to figure some things out, to figure out what we can do to keep, you know, the citizens here instead of, you know, that 20 to 25 age wanting to leave the city. So that's some work to do to figure it out.
Yeah, you all are getting into the fun part. I mean, I think data is fun, don't get me wrong, but the strategy and what we do, that's when the meaty discussions really happen.
Yeah, I enjoyed reading it. Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
I think something we got to keep in mind is Bonsai is not included in this. Is that right?
It's in the pipeline, I believe, but I will go and double-check.
But I don't think it's in this data.
Yeah, I don't think it was neither.
Okay, I'll double-check because I know, like, when we did this, it was like, just, I'm trying to remember.
Bonsai opened November of 2020.
Right. Yeah, but that's a good point. We'll double-check, and if it's not specifically in the data, we'll make sure it's noted in the report because that definitely was a major development.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have the review of agenda items. Devin's not here, so.
Thank you, your pro, I'm Kelly. So for tonight's regular City Council meeting, we have a public hearing for the proposed 2026 budget to take a public comment on that and hear from the public on our proposed 2026 budget. Next on that, we have the related ordinance for the 2026 budget on first reading tonight. Additionally, on first reading tonight, we have the rezoning of the property located at, I don't know why I'm buzzing over here, the rezoning of property located at 2500 West Hampton Avenue. And then the other ordinance we have tonight, and for the 2500 West Hampton, that will be coming back as a public hearing on November 10th. So we will take comment at that time, and that is a quasi-judicial hearing. And then the other ordinance we have tonight on the packet is an ordinance that's going to change the background, or the wording in our code for backgrounds for pawnbrokers and massage facilities. So currently, most of our other ones in the code for marijuana, liquor, it's very generic so that it gives us flexibility to use like a outside contractor, or I can run the backgrounds, or maybe the police department at some point. But in the pawnbroker area and for massage facilities, it's very specific. And so we are looking to match the code to make it generic across the board. And then we have a resolution tonight appointing the Adams Group to do our audit. And so we've contracted with them previously. I do have Teresa available, if you guys have questions regarding that contract.
Okay.
And then Teresa will also present the budget during the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then following that, we have the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency. And so for the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency tonight, we also have a public hearing to amend the 2025 budget for that. And then for to look at the proposed 2026 budget, we have a resolution for both of those items on your agenda. And then the final item is also to appoint the Adams Group to do the audit for 2025 for the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency. And those are all of your agenda items. Teresa, I don't know if you have anything additional that you would like to add?
Yeah, I can, I don't know if, since we have a little time, I don't know if you want me to kind of talk about the budget now, or if you'd rather wait until the meeting? Or I can talk about the audit contracts. There's not much to say, but I'd be happy to chat about either one of those, since we do have a little time during the work session. I'm happy to do either one.
Yeah, we can do.
I think for the budget information, we need to wait for the public hearing before we go over that because if there's any interested parties, we need to do it all in that session.
Okay.
But you can go over the contracts, or we can move forward with staff reports if you'd like.
Yeah, Teresa, you want to go over contracts or?
Sure, yeah. So the Adams Group has been doing the City and SRA audits for a while now. They do a very good job. I feel that they are very thorough. I would like to ask the council to engage them for 2025 with the SRA. They do have a really good grasp of that, and the debt service structure at the SRA is convoluted, to put it mildly. So I do, I do like having the Adams Group. I do like them because they are also a resource. As I have things come up during the year, I can reach out to them and ask them. And so I, it's a very good relationship, and I also do feel that they do an extremely good job of auditing both the city and the SRA and getting back to me timely. I have heard nightmares from other people with different auditors. So I just, I just think they do a great job at what we hire them to do. So I would, would appreciate if they, you guys approve both those contracts tonight for the City and the SRA. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions? No, no questions. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jenna, or?
I'd like to invite Public Works Director Jeremiah Riker to give his update on the crack seal project at this time.
Good evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that the crack seal for the residential has already started. They got to it a little quicker than I had thought. This, this operation has been moving very fast. So it's kind of hard to keep track of them. Right now, they're currently working basically south of Oxford, west of Federal, and they should be done with those in the morning. And then they're going to move over to the south side of Oxford, east of Federal, going all the way towards Santa Fe. There's some, some small stuff in them for them to touch up over there. But we're anticipating next week, they're going to be completely done with the, with the whole city. So it's a very fast operation, and this will basically bring the close, the pavement maintenance work that we have slated for this year. So this will, will kind of button everything up. I will say that it is a little bit more, like I said, fast-moving. So basically, what they're doing is they're placing no parks for one side of the street so that the residents can park on the other side of the street, and then the next day they come back and they'll do the other side so that that way there's no, like, no parking on the entire street. It just makes it a little more convenient. So they're able to do that with the crack ceiling. Are there any questions about that?
No, no Jeremiah, no sir.
All right, sounds good. Uh, let me know if something comes up, if they come into your neighborhood and, and we'll be sure to take care of it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you.
I'd be happy to move forward with my city clerk report. All right. Um, so on your dais tonight, you can see that there's some new, uh, technology items. You have some new iPads. Um, so with separate voting devices, hoping that this kind of streamlines the software and prevents it from crashing. Um, we were given by, um, open media, this is their best practice is to have a separate device for voting. So, um, just to get them turned on, you could just press the button on the left side and then swipe up. And you should already be logged into your voting software. You just have to hit sign in, but, um, it should work. And if you have questions or need help with it, let us know. And then, um, Reagan and I did attend the clerks conference last week. Lots of good takeaways. We had, um, a legislative session with CML. We had updates on legislation from the liquor enforcement division, marijuana enforcement division. Uh, we actually got to go to, um, a marijuana grow house and see how they do inspections down there. We visited a marijuana dispensary and checked out how they do their inspections there as well. Um, did a lot of work with the M and, or MED and, um, with the fire department down there, just to kind of see what their process. Um, we also attended a farm to table session. So we went out to the farm and got to see all of the, from the process of growing it, uh, um, picking everything and then getting it out onto the table. So it was a very neat conference. Um, those are my takeaways. I'll let Reagan speak about his takeaways.
Yeah, it was just an awesome week. Uh, having never been down to Pueblo before, uh, and definitely, uh, they have a great river walk down there. Um, yes, lots of good classes, uh, definitely kept me busy.
Nice.
Yes, kind of definitely the same takeaways kind of as Jenna with the, the LED and MED and CML, you know, definitely doing those inspections and stuff was pretty cool. So, yeah, that's really all I got.
Yeah. So thank you for supporting us and continuing, continuing our education. Um, and the last item I have is the last week of votes. Polls close next Tuesday, so make sure you get your vote in. That is all I have. Happy to answer any questions. All right.
No, no questions.
Pass it on to the city attorney.
Yeah, city attorney.
There we go. So, um, Brandon Dippin here, I'm filling in for Betsy and sort of a huge legal report. Um, but I did want to highlight one thing we are working on right now, and that is the update to the wireless code. And so you're probably not aware that Sheridan is a member of the CCUA, the Color Communications and Utilities Alliance. And through that organization, you actually get some free legal time through our law firm. Cause we specialize in utilities matters, including telecommunications. And so we're going to start working on the Sheridan, um, wireless code updated to current practices. There's been a number of federal and state law changes recently, um, that update our ability to cite, uh, wireless facilities. Um, in particular, there's a law passed, um, the session called HP 1056, um, that severely restricted our ability to, um, regulate, um, co-locations for existing sites. And so we want to make sure that Sheridan has a maximum amount of authority over those facilities. Um, because we did make this change, um, you know, they may be able to do it without sort of any permits from the city. So that's something where we get, starting on here real soon, um, and hopefully have an ordinance for you before the end of the year.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening. Um, yeah, uh, last week we had the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference. It's usually out of state. It was in Denver this year. So, um, attended that and it was outstanding. I'm very glad to know that our PIO Wendy was able to go as well. There's a track that is for the public information officers. Um, so I was happy to see her there. We were able to hook up for a short time and take some photos. And I'm sure she did a lot of great classes. Um, the classes that are there, there's just so many to pick from. And then a lot of it is just meeting people, getting different conversations going and talking about the different things that are going. But one of the things that I made sure I was looking at was, um, how to mentor and develop our people better. I mean, that's one thing that we're always trying to do so that we can stay in-house with people, um, that we need for supervisor positions. And when I leave, uh, hopefully the next chief will come from within house if we do this right. So, um, concentrating on that. And one of the fun things we did is, um, I had made a suggestion that last year's IACP that they should do a cornhole tournament since I like to play. So they actually did that. It was sponsored by Axon and Skydio. And I actually, uh, me and my partner, we won, beat some guys from Mass that thought they were pretty good and had a good cheering squad, but we had to shut them down. So welcomed them to Denver. So it was a great time. So thank you all for, um, continuing to support us in our education and our training to make the city better. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, I think we're, I will adjourn this work session meeting. Time is 6:34. We're going to have us a, a long break here. See everybody back at seven. Jenna, unless there's something else. We're good? All right. See everyone back at seven.
Is she on?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to be practicing language justice today and we're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish so that we can communicate in the language of our heart. Once we turn on the interpretation, if you're on Zoom, you're going to see a globe that is going to come up at the bottom of your screen where you're going to be able to select your language. Please remember to speak at a conversational place and very close to your microphone. Hola a todos, soy Andrea, estoy aquí con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje y tendremos interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Una vez que aprendamos la interpretación, si estás en Zoom, vas a ver un globo que va a aparecer en la parte inferior de tu pantalla donde vas a poder seleccionar tu idioma. And how's we can start interpretation now?
Thank you, Andrea. I will call the October 27, 2025 regular meeting of the City Council to order. The time is 7:00 PM. I get roll call, please. Okay, we all.
Do you have a quorum, Mayor Protem?
All right, thank you. Um, I would like to call a motion to excuse Mayor Byerflure. Got a motion from Moreno and a second, oh, sorry, council member Moreno and second by council member Stang. Take a vote. And that vote passes. Will you please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Glorious God, you promised to open doors of blessing and abundance to your people. We ask that you would work mightily in us today. Come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting. Lead each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions at this time. Enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. Purify our thoughts and motives so that each one of us will enter this meeting desiring the good of others and the pleasure of your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have agenda approval. City Clerk, is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor Protem Kelly.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the financial reports. Are there any questions on the financial reports? Nope. Okay. I have a motion. First motion by council member Stang and second motion by council member Camacho. Please vote. That motion passed. Staff reports. Next, we have staff reports. City Clerk?
Um, nothing further to report but happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yeah, nothing further from me.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Nothing additional, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go over the minutes. It's a regular, uh, the next we'll have the approval of minutes, minutes for the regular city council member, uh, meeting for October 13th, 2025. Are there any questions for the minutes? Nope. I have a motion by council member Moreno and who was, I think, the second one was, uh, council member Lopez. Vote. And that motion passes as well. Next, we'll go over the consent agenda. Consent agenda authorized dispersments that have been or will be made from October 1st, 2025 and October 15th, 2025 in the amount of $527,404.13 per reference and transferred funds. Any questions on the consent agenda? I have a motion from council member Camacho and a second by council member Moreno. Please vote. That motion passed. All right, next we'll have, uh, public hearing for the city council. Now we will recess the regular meeting at 7:05 to enter into public hearing to gather input from the public to propose 2026 City of Sheridan budget. I will enter the following exhibit into record. Exhibit A, proof of publication of Inglewood Herald on October 16, 2025. I would like to invite the opening remarks by Financial Director Adler.
Um, my apologies. Um, that should be corrected to a proof of publication in the Littleton Independent. We have changed public key or publishing agencies. My apologies.
Uh, do we need to amend that?
Um, I'll amend it in the record, but it is a Littleton Independent.
Littleton Independent.
And it was published still on the October 16th, 2025 date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight we have the 2026 budget in front of you. Um, we have presented this to you over the last, I believe, four work sessions breaking it out. Um, we did have one major change that I would like to point out from what was presented to you. Um, I did find that there was a formula error and when I added the line for the COPs that transfer, it start, it excluded the transfer to capital. So our ending fund balance is lower than what I had originally shown you at the last, um, work session. So I kind of have a breakout on page 73 that goes through it all. But I do kind of want to point out what you, what I would want you to look at is what we're projecting is that we are going to end with $11,250,915. That's a very healthy fund balance. And so, and what that equates to is it equates to about eight and a half months worth of expenses. So that's a very, you know, if there wasn't one more penny collected by the city, they could still survive for almost nine months on what is in the fund balance. So that's a very healthy fund balance. Um, what you will notice is that it, we have the one-time transfers for all those one-time, you know, vehicles, you know, road repairs, things like that. If you take those one-time things out, we would have revenue over expenses of $8,203. So one-time things, that's I, how I feel and how Devon feels is that's an okay use for your fund balance. If you're using your fund balance to just pay the day-to-day, that's, that's when there's a problem. So, um, so I, so I did want to point that out. It does look like a big difference. But overall, the city is still has an extremely healthy fund balance. Everything else that we presented to you is exactly the same. So there's no other changes. I am happy to answer any questions that any of you might have about the 2026 budget.
No, Theresa.
Alrighty, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite comments from the public and interested parties. At this time, I would like to invite comments from the public and interested parties. Don't see any. Okay, are there any comments from staff and legal counsel? No. Okay. Any questions from counsel? No. All right, good. Close the public hearing. Time is seven oh nine. Then we'll have the following related document for the first reading ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty five ordinance for the city of, the city of Sheridan adopting a budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty five and appropriating sums for defraying the expenses and liabilities for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty six and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six in accordance with the statute of the state of Colorado and the charter of the city of Sheridan. Any questions on ordinance sixteen, twenty twenty five? Staff, do you have any comments? No? All right, I have a motion from council member Moreno and a second by council member Whitaker. Please vote. And that motion passes. Next, we have items for individual consideration. We have ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Sheridan, Colorado rezoning property located at twenty five hundred West Hampton Avenue from the business bus dash one business light industrial bus dash L I and manufactured home park M H zone districts to the planned unit development P U D zone district and approving the associated twenty five hundred West Hampton Avenue official development plan. Is there any questions on ordinance seventeen, twenty twenty five? Staff, any comments? I have a motion by council member Stang and the second by council member Moreno. Next, we have ordinance. Oh, sorry, need to vote. Apologies. Jay, we're waiting on you.
I know. I just wonder why there hasn't been, you know, this is what we're going to have a quasi judicial like judgment on at some point, right?
At some point when it, when it gets.
I just feel like this is early to vote on this because I don't know all of the.
So we're just setting the public hearing at this point in time. So there'll be a full hearing at the next meeting on this item. At which time the public will be invited, be heard, evidence will be presented. So this just sets the date for the public hearing essentially.
And that motion passes. Next, we have an ordinance for the city council of Sheridan, Colorado amending sections twenty two dash eighty five and twenty two dash one fourteen of the Sheridan Municipal Court Code Regarding Background Check Procedures for Pond Brokers and Massage Facilities. Is there any questions on ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty five? Staff, do you have any comments?
No additional comments.
Okay. We have a motion by council member Whitaker and a second by council member Moreno. Can we please vote? And that motion passes. Next, we have a resolution of the city council of the city of Sheridan adopting the Adams Group LLC to audit the city's financial statements for the calendar year beginning December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Do we have any questions on resolution thirty four dash twenty twenty five? Staff, do you have any comments?
I do not have any comments but happy to answer questions.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a motion by council member Moreno and a second by council member Stang. Let me vote, please. And that motion passes. And we have mayor's choice. I don't really have anything. Like I said, as I was walking through the city, I was speaking to a lot of people. A lot of the, our elders here in the city. There was one thing that we were talking about and that was basically that they don't have, you know, some of their relatives aren't around to check on them. So I'm trying to figure out what we can put together to check on our elders because a lot of them don't have ways of, you know, getting their shopping done or taking care of their lawns or having someone check on them. So that was one thing that stuck out to me a lot. Hopefully, we can figure that out as the council all get together and kind of brainstorm some ideas. Other than that, I don't have anything. Is there any, any council members have anything? Oh, do you have it? You have that text? Or we can find it later. Okay. Here we go. All right, we have an event that's going to be coming up. It's a bingo for barbecue benefit for local boys and girls. So it's basically to bring a new unwrapped toy and you can play for, play bingo for prizes and pleasure. We have a barbecue dinner that's going to start at five thirty and that'll go to six thirty P M. And then we have a cash bar that will be available to eight thirty P M and the bingo will be from six thirty P M to eight thirty P M. Oh, man. Trying to give you some information where you guys can find it. It's going to be Saturday, November fifteen, twenty twenty five. And it's going to be at the V F W Post ninety six forty four located at twenty six eighty West Hampton Avenue. If you go on social media, I'm sure you can find the information that will have it to where you can buy your tickets for dinner or just to play bingo. You got a postcard in mail and there was postcards that were sent out, so be on the lookout for that. Come join us.
It's also in the city newsletter that went out today and then it's always in the city's social media channels and we'll have it up on the city's website shortly, so lots of places to find it.
All right, thank you.
Just have a quick comment.
Yeah.
So next time we get together will be after the election. And so I just wanted to say good luck to everybody and I hope everybody votes. It's great to see so many constituents here today. I hope you will all vote. And I just think it's really a great. I don't know, I'm just, I'm very happy to be able to run, to be able to do this and to be able to represent our community.
Yeah, absolutely. Any, any other comments? No. All right, we'll move to public comment. Each person shall be permitted to speak for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. And a person's time may not be shared with any other person. Public comments shall not exceed twenty minutes. Members of the public may provide comments on the topic not listed. May not, may provide comments on any topic not listed on the agenda. Comments are to be provided in person at the podium. There any, anyone want to come up and speak?
So we have Meredith Long signed up to do public comment.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem, before we proceed, I just want to make a brief reminder that if you're, would like to talk about the flying saucer, that cannot be done at this time because of quasi judicial rules, this must be done under the public hearing, which will be the next meeting. And so if you say anything at this meeting, it cannot be considered as part of the record.
I guess my question just in general. Oh, yes. Yes, Meredith Long, twenty five hundred West Hampton, Sheridan, Colorado. I just came in and I was listening to the Sheridan housing needs assessment and just wanted to see, is that a study available to the public and how would I go about getting that or looking for that?
So you're welcome to submit a records request to my office. There's a form that you can fill out here in person or you can submit it online.
Perfect. And is there any fee attached to that?
I'd have to look at it. I can't tell you right now. It's the top of my head.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned. The time is seven nineteen. All right. I will call to order October twenty, twenty seven, twenty twenty five meeting of the Sheridan Redevelop Agency. And the time is seven twenty P M. Roll call, please.
All members are still present except for Mayor Terry Byder Flure.
Okay.
Proceed.
All right, we'll do the approval of minutes. Next, we have the approval of minutes, minutes of the Sheridan Redevelop Agency meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I got a motion by council. Would it be council or would it be board? Would it be board now?
It's member.
Is it member?
Yes, member.
Member. Lopez and member Moreno. Can we vote?
Any questions on the minute?
Oh, any questions on the minutes? Nope. Thank you, Jenna. And we'll go ahead and place our votes. And that motion's passed. Next, we have the approval. Let me see, we already did the minutes, so we'll go over the financial. Next, we have the financial reports. Are there any questions on the financial reports? No. All right, then we have a motion from member Camacho and a second by member Stang. Can we vote? Are we just waiting on you, Ernie? No, no, you okay? And then that motion is approved. All right, then we have the approval of dispersments. All right, authorized dispersments of September in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars and forty four cents that have been or will be made of expense referenced below. Legal expenses is zero. Other professional services, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety seven dollars and forty six cents. City support services, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. And other expenses, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety eight cents. Authorized dispersments of October in the amount of one hundred and six, one hundred and sixty three thousand and eighty four dollars and sixty three cents that have been or will be made for expenses referenced below. Legal expenses zero. Other professional service, three thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty seven cents. City support services, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred and six. And other expenses, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and six cents. Next, we have, there we go. So can I get a motion? We have a motion from member Moreno and second by member Camacho. Please vote. And that motion has passed. Then we have a public hearing for the Sheridan Redevelop Agency. I'll call it to recess of this regular meeting at seven twenty three P M to enter into public hearing to gather citizen input on the proposed twenty twenty six Sheridan Redevelop Agency budget and to consider an amendment to the twenty twenty five Sheridan Redevelop Budget. I will enter the following exhibit into record. Exhibit A, proof of publication.
Littleton Independent.
And the Littleton Independent.
Thank you.
On October sixteen, twenty twenty five. I would like to invite opening remarks from Financial Director Adler.
All right, so tonight we are asking you to amend the twenty twenty five, both the general fund and the debt service fund. So this is a good problem. You had more revenue, so therefore you could spend more. So the general fund, we had higher public improvement fee revenue. So the city reimburseables, we were able to pay more reimbursement on that. So we are asking, the original budget was one million, nine fifty three, two hundred and thirty five. And we're asking you to amend it tonight to two million, one oh five, six thirty three. Then the debt service revenues, our property tax increment was higher and also our public improvement fee. And so what that means is, is we can pay more on our B bonds. That payment will happen in December. And then because we have higher public improvement fee revenue, that means we can pay more city public improvement fee. So what we're asking for the debt service fund is the original budget was thirteen million, one fifty three, eight oh four. And we're asking you to amend it to thirteen million, three forty one, five oh six. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the twenty twenty five budget amendment.
Have any questions? Staff, do we have any questions? No?
No. And I apologize, there should be no motion in second on this. It's not a voting item.
Okay, so no motion on this. All right, well, I'll close the public hearing. The time is seven twenty five P M.
Yeah, you have to invite the public to be heard.
Nope. Okay, sorry. Do we have anyone from the public that wants to come up? Nope, no one from the public. No one online? Okay, we're good. All right, now I will close this public hearing at seven twenty six P M. And we'll have a resolution. We have the following related documents, resolution two, twenty twenty five. A resolution of the Sheridan Redevelop Agency amending the budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty five and appropriating sums for defraying expenses and liabilities for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty five and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty five in accordance with the statutes of the state of Colorado. I have a motion from member Whitaker and a second from member Stang. Do you have any questions on the resolution? Two, twenty twenty five. Staff? No? Okay. Can we vote on this, please? And that passed. I know I did that a little backwards, but we still got it.
You're doing great.
I jumped ahead of myself. Apologies. All right. We also have a resolution three, twenty twenty five, related to the public hearing. A resolution for the Sheridan Redevelop Agency adopting the budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty six and appropriating sums for the defraying expense and liabilities for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty six and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six in accordance with the statutes of the state of Colorado. Any questions on resolution three, twenty twenty five? Staff, do you have any comments? Nope. All right, I have a motion from member Moreno and a second by member Stang. Can we vote, please? And that motion passes. And next, we have a resolution four, twenty twenty five, a resolution for the Sheridan Redevelop Agency of Sheridan, Colorado, S R A appointing the Adams Group LLC to audit the agency's financial statements for the calendar year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Any questions on resolution four, twenty twenty five? Nope, staff? All right. Got a motion from member Camacho and a second by member Whitaker. Can we vote, please? And that passes. That motion passes. All right, next, we have new business. Teresa report on August twenty five. That's what, that's what it says here, the Teresa report.
I love it. I have my own report. Oh, my goodness. I love it. I have my own report. Oh, my goodness. So, yes, so, um, so what you have in front of you, um, on page forty. Um, kind of what I'm going to look at is the pledge revenues. What we're looking at, um, for the August twenty twenty five. Um, compared to the prior year was five point nine percent higher. Um, the year to date is two point one pers, two point one seven percent higher. So that's a good sign. It's still coming in. I did want to make a note of the next, um, item that's right under that. Um, so the August meeting, um, when that was presented, it showed the June sales at the thirty six million, one fifty seven, six ninety three, which showed a bit, a really huge increase. Um, when I looked into it, it looks like, um, when, um. When they did that, they reported the gross sales and they are supposed to report the net sales. And so what it should actually be, it's, it is correct on the report, is a thirty one million, seven sixty eight, four twenty five. So that made it a three point seven one percent increase, which is a little more in line than eighteen percent. I would love eighteen percent, but. So I did kind of want to point that out because that was a change and you will see that when you look down, um, at the, um, chart, the last page, you will see that corrected. So. Um, I am happy to answer any questions on my own personal report. And so, yes, happy to answer questions.
Any question? No. Teresa, I think we're good.
All right. Thank you so much for keeping with me on all the budget things and everything. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven thirty one. Thank you all for coming and spending time with us. Thank you.